Okay, it is 10:00 AM and the Christian County Board of Adjustment is now in session to exercise powers granted to us by 64.281 RSMO that therefore includes hearing and deciding all matters referred to the Board of Adjustment as required under zoning regulations adopted by the County Commission. And if any person is aggrieved that doesn't like the decisions that we make, you can contest that within 90 days to the Circuit Court of Christian County. Okay? I think we're ready for roll call.
Yes, sir. Lynn Morris.
Present.
Bradley Jackson.
Present.
And Jose Vellut.
Present.
We would have four.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any minutes from last meeting?
We do.
Okay, so we will approve those and sign those after this meeting. Okay? So is that from the last meeting?
Yeah. Did you guys get a copy of those in your packets?
No. No, I don't think so.
Okay.
So I say we'll have to look at studies real quick and then approve it, okay?
Yep.
Yeah, no, it wasn't in my packet.
Okay.
Okay, and that's why I ask, okay? And then before we begin the meeting, I need to take Exhibit A and offer it into evidence by the planning administrator.
Yes, sir. So on behalf of Christian County, I hereby offer into evidence to the Board of Adjustment Exhibit A, which is our planning and zoning regulations as amended and adopted by the Christian County Commission.
Okay. Unless I hear an objection, the Christian County Planning and Zoning Regulations will be adopted into evidence. All right. The next thing is pretty important. This is a public hearing and we want everyone that wants to speak or make a comment one way or the other. We'd like to swear everybody in at the same time. And generally sometimes, because we've got a lot of people here today, but sometimes we'll let people after the fact kind of, and it just takes a lot of extra time to swear people in independently, one at a time. So if you're wanting to talk today about this issue, then go ahead and be planning right now and we're going to have you stand up and I will swear you in all at the same time, okay? So everyone that wants to speak today, you're welcome to speak, so don't hold back if you think that you have anything to say. Just hold your right hand up and repeat after me. Do you solemnly affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you shall give is to this matter, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I say I do. Okay, thank you very much. You're all sworn in today. Do they have blue cards? Do they need any?
We don't have the blue cards here. We'll just take a name and address when they come up to speak and let us know that they've been sworn in.
Okay.
And we'll just keep note of it as we go.
So what we'll do, what we'll do is, one at a time, when it's time to speak, we'll have you let them know what your name is and they'll make a note of it and that you've been sworn in. And then you can probably stand right there, stand behind our own employees, county employees, and we'll go from there. Is that okay? All right. I think now we're ready to hear our first case.
Yeah, so our first case will be under Old Business and that will be, 2024-0073. The applicant is Ditch Farms LLC. Gabriel Ditch is the representative. Ms. Holly's here this morning for them. Their current zoning is A1 agricultural. So I will kind of quickly go back through the basics here, because I think we've all heard this before already. So the property in question is along Hawthorne Road, south of Highlandville. It's Track B that's highlighted in blue on that second page. Nearby land uses and zoning is A1 and R1 on the zoning side mostly, and land uses are single-family residential and agricultural type uses. The third page there is an overview of what the applicant is looking at doing there. So they've got a little barn on site. They're going to have trees that they'll grow on site and sell there. And then the conditional use permit is to request for a small gift shop and like a food truck or food vendor of some type. So the background on this site, it was originally that whole 80 acres that's A, B, C, and D. The property owner split it down a little bit and they still live in the house next door and they sold off some of the other pieces. Our land use plan looks at this favorably for agricultural or residential uses. It does have an approach and direct frontage on Hawthorne Road. They didn't give any specific plan for signage for their CUP, so they would fall under Article 13 still for that. Utilities are well-inseptic out here. As far as stormwater impacts, there's nothing significant that we expect there. At this time, the impervious surface doesn't reach the threshold for stormwater cows, but if it was to reach that point, then that would certainly be required. Groundwater impacts, as far as the conditional use permit goes, there's no concerns on groundwater impacts there. There's no map sink holes. There's a little bit of flood plain on the north side of the property, but at this time there's no proposed development up there. Traffic impact, there was no specifics provided for this CUP or this proposal, but the most likely exit would be 160 on Glossop and come a little bit north and then come down Hawthorne west to get to this location. So at the first meeting, when we were looking at this, we were looking at it under Article 53, Section 14 of our zoning regulations, which allows for temporary structures and uses. And we had kind of discussed the difference between the trees and the agricultural use and the gift shop and food truck, which would be more of the conditional use that's really being requested here. So at that first P&amp;Z meeting, the Commission took comment and received some letters. Most of the concern was around Hawthorne Road and safety and narrowness aspects out there. There was also concern on water table drawdown, moving beyond what was approved in the CUP, and then potential encroachment of future commercial uses along Hawthorne Road. So at June 17th meeting, the Commission made a vote of five to one to recommend denial. We then moved to the Board of Adjustment on July 2nd. There it was voted two to zero to remand this item back to planning and zoning after hearing their recommendation and the facts of the case there, as well as additional public input. So the two questions that the Board wanted answered at the time, who wanted the P&amp;Z Commission to consider. The first one was, do individuals entering the property, cutting their own tree, and then paying for that and leaving, does that rise to the level or threshold of being a commercial use versus an agricultural use? The second question really was for the Planning and Zoning Commission to reconsider the item, ensuring that, you know, what the agricultural use was, was separated from what was being requested in the conditional use permit. So we went back to planning and zoning on July 15th. And for question one, staff reached out to our attorney for his comments on this as well. And he stated that, long story short, cutting and selling the trees is principally permitted and accessory permitted use in an A1-zoned district. And he stated it made no difference to him interpretation-wise whether they cut it themselves, they paid someone else to do it, they had individuals come on and cut them, that would still be, the use itself would still be approved. So then really the question came down to what's being asked in the conditional use permit of the gift shop and the food truck or food vendor. So in P&amp;Z's response to the Board of Adjustment on the first question that was asked, was they made a motion, seconded, and then voted unanimously to respond to the Board that this, you know, supports the attorney and staff's historical interpretation of our code, that this isn't allowed principal and accessory use, and there would be no additional permitting that would be needed or required for someone to do this as far as the trees selling and cutting and growing on their property goes. So question two, after determining how we're going to look at the ag aspect and solidifying that, we looked at question two, which was to separate the agricultural use, which is the growing and selling of trees, from the request of the CUP, which is the gift shop and the food vendor. So the P&amp;Z Commission did take additional public comment at that meeting. We also received several letters of support and another letter of opposition at that P&amp;Z hearing. It is, I think, important to note, four of the letters of support were from property owners along Hawthorne Road. And one of those was the next-door neighbor that was the previous property owner wrote a letter of support for that. So at the planning and zoning meeting, when we were looking at question number two, we really stressed the fact of interpreting the difference between what's being requested and then also what is the concern, what's the draw here? So the draw to this property is primarily going to be the Christmas trees, which we determined isn't allowed use. I suspect with the conditions as they've been approved, a 500-square-foot gift shop and a food truck will probably not draw a great amount of additional traffic to this location. If you just think about it, you know, we don't know what they may sell in there, but it's intended to be a small space. And if it's a Christmas tree farm, it's probably going to be Christmas-related items. It's probably going to be a lot of stuff that you could buy at Walmart or Lowe's or somewhere else. And it's reasonable to suspect that not a lot of people are going to go particularly far out of their way just to drive to this property to go to a gift shop. We can't guarantee that nobody will, obviously. But it is reasonable to suspect the primary draw will be the Christmas trees and the gift shop will be sort of secondary. So then we sort of framed it as, looking at the conditional use permit and considering, what's our primary draw here? What is the discontinuity between the gift shop and the surrounding land uses and zonings? And are there reasonable conditions that can be placed on that to allow this gift shop to exist while minimizing, to the greatest degree possible, the impact that that gift shop may have on surrounding landowners? And the question there is, is what conditions can we place on it to minimize that? Or is the effect of this so great that the burden to the public or the surrounding landowners would be so great that this conditional use permit isn't reasonable and potentially shouldn't be approved? Because that burden or that additional draw might be so great that it's just not feasible or reasonable at that location. So again, I kind of got ahead of myself a little bit, but that's where the P&amp;Z Commission did take additional public, but we had seven people get up and speak in opposition. Again, most of that was revolving around the road conditions out there, incompatibility of, you know, the request of the CUP with the land uses around it, well and water usage concerns, and the potential concern of growth of commercial operations out in that area. And then this is also where I mentioned, we did receive one letter of opposition from 180 Prism Drive, which is in the subdivision just to the south there, and 25 letters of support, with four of those being people that live on Hawthorne Road in a relatively close vicinity. So after hashing all this out at P&amp;Z, we got to a vote and they voted four to three to recommend approval of the CUP to the Board of Adjustment. With the conditions as listed on the last two sheets here, I'll go ahead and read those out loud. So one, all outdoor lighting shall be designed to be directed downward and inward to minimize light pollution and overflow onto neighboring properties. Two, any temporary directional or event signage is to be removed immediately upon that season's public operations. Three, a letter from the Christian County Health Department shall be required to confirm that the applicant's method of wastewater would be acceptable. Four, public operations should only take place annually on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays that fall between the days beginning on November 1st and ending on January 1st of each year. And furthermore, operations will only be open to the public between the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. each day. Five, any food truck that operates on-site shall only be there during the days and times And only one food truck or vendor shall be on-site at any time. Six, food trucks or other vendors shall not create a noise that's audible from the property line. Seven, the gift shop area shall not exceed a maximum of 500 square feet of floor space and only one such space shall be allowed. So this limits them to one space of 500. They couldn't have two 250-square-foot spaces separated or any, one spot. Keep it condensed, keep it as compact as possible. Eight, the gift shop space would be built to IBC standards and need any parking or ADA requirements that would be required. Nine, if the use does not begin 18 months from the date of approval or ceases operation for 12 consecutive months, the conditional use permit would be considered abandoned and invalid, and they would have to reapply to continue that gift shop usage in the future. Nine, the owner or person running this would be required to submit a site plan to our office every year and allow for an onsite inspection no later than 30 days before November 1st. This gives staff an opportunity to have some enforcement mechanism here and keep eyes on what's happening to make sure that they're not getting bigger than their britches or what's allowed in that conditional use permit. And then 10, this goes for any, but we wrote it out just to be perfectly clear, any changes to the approved permit or conditions would require a new conditional use permit to be granted. And then 11, all other county regulations shall be adhered to. So this is now back in front of you all to consider. You all have obviously the opportunity to amend or rewrite any of these conditions as you may see fit or as you may take any additional input or anything of that nature. Time to order.
Okay, very good. Let's go ahead and have our first person that wants to come up and speak, okay?
Mike Deans, 940 Hawthorne Road, been sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is pretty well set. We know what's going to happen, but I really encourage the county to know seriously widening Hawthorne so that we don't have ramifications like the invasion after 2020 on the border. Hopefully I am wrong that there won't be so many people. Hopefully everything will work out fine. These are good people, they have a business. But ramifications may follow. Y'all own that. Whatever happens, y'all own that. But I sent y'all a letter last week, y'all received it. I think it's only fair and proper that they get a copy of that letter. And we'll be watching to see how things go. Hopefully no one will park on private property. We have a private road right off of there where we live. Because if they park on private property, they can be told off. And if they block Hawthorne, it will be calling the Sheriff's Department to take action. Okay? So we will work it out, work together, and hopefully everything will be fine. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. And to your letter that we all, the Commissioners, received, I did send that directly up to our county attorney. He has looked at and reviewed and talked to me yesterday about that after hours. He called me back and we've talked about that. So next person is, come on up, state your name and be sworn in.
Ruth Mees, 240 Prison Drive, downtown. In the reiteration of what's transpired so far, the one thing that I didn't hear mentioned and had they tabled the idea of bringing in trees to sell?
No, I didn't hear you clearly on that last question.
Have they tabled the idea of bringing in trees? All that was mentioned was the sale of cut and grown trees on that property. But as I previously understood, they were looking at bringing in trees from other locations to sell during that time period.
That was one of the questions that I was going to have a little bit further in, but yes, I mean, obviously if trees have been grown or in the process of growing, it's going to take several years before they're ready to be able to be sold. So in the meantime, would operations not exist until such time as the trees that are grown on-site are ready to sell? Or would they be allowed to bring trees in from a different location to sell on-site, which would not technically fall in agriculture, I would think, because it wasn't grown on-site?
Well, so I'll help answer that too. Talking to Mr. Fax for over an hour, our county attorney, yesterday, late afternoon, evening, way our regulations, it says in the vicinity, agricultural product, that Christmas tree is an agricultural product. It's not as typical or average as corn, strawberries, wheat, all the things that we grow, even hay. I mean, so it's not, we do have a Christmas tree. It's been farm over in Nixon that's been in existence for several years and seems to be doing, as far as I can tell from the research I've done, not created really any problems. But it says in the vicinity, Scott. So if they purchased an agricultural product in the vicinity, now that's really vague because I don't know how far the vicinity is. If the vicinity is in Missouri and it's an agricultural product in Missouri and they're supplementing it for a while till their Christmas trees grow bigger, that's one thing. If they bring it from some other state, that's another thing. And so we didn't really, in planning and zoning, the one, the meeting that I did attend, because I was out for seven weeks on a health issue, we, I don't know if anybody ever discussed that or not.
Not that I recall.
That was actually one of my specific questions at the last P&amp;Z meeting, is what is the definition of vicinity for that?
So when Ms. Holly comes up and speaks, we'll see if we can get a better answer.
And how does that impact going up until the point that their trees are mature enough to sell? And then once they have mature trees to sell, does that still apply that they can bring in the same number or whatever number they want to have trees to sell through, or up until January 1st?
Yeah, and I mean, that's a good question, but the thing that Mr. Fax told me last night more than one time is that it's an agricultural product. Someone grew that tree and that's just like growing peaches and having peaches shipped off someplace, or plums, or corn, or anything else. He considered that an agricultural product. And so, we can shut that door, yeah, please, thank you. And so, now, but it just says grown in the vicinity, vicinity. And so we don't really, we've maybe not had that type of case brought up before, before planning and zoning or this Board of Adjustment. But his legal opinion was that it is an agricultural product.
By bringing in trees and using a large vehicle, either a large bed or a large trailer, they're essentially making Hawthorne Road a one-lane road because there's no way to opposing directions of traffic and move by each other. So there you're adding additional possibility for harm to those using that road. I'd also like to point out that you mentioned that one of the letters you received for that was from the seller of the land. I'm sure he spoke, most likely, in favor of it because he wanted to sell the land, the owner. But he also lives east of Prism Drive, which is going to, as we've said at all the prior meetings, that's a very dangerous intersection right there. Adding 100 cars a day, probably going in and out of this Christmas tree farm is going to add significant danger. It's not like them building a house and having one or two, maybe three people pulling in and out a day. We're talking about traffic coming this way, traffic coming that way, because they're going to have to come, they're going to have to leave. And I don't think I'm being over-dramatic in saying you're putting people's lives at risk in that area because they couldn't have picked a much worse spot, to put it traffic-wise. And there's a sign there also warning about the school bus in that area, that this is a dangerous intersection. Hawthorne's too narrow for that much traffic. The added traffic is only going to compound accidents. There's been accidents on that road already. I can see how some of the people who aren't in and out on it frequently, that possibly with east of Prism Drive, you're quoting all these letters for it, but the people who are right there and the ones whose lives are going to be depending on this decision and how people drive, and we all know, you're going to get a Christmas tree, your mind's on that Christmas tree. It's not on a road that you haven't ever driven before and don't know how to traverse. Somebody's going to be hurt or killed there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. We have, and I will be talking to our county engineer that's over roads and bridges, and I already talked to her once on this issue. And we make our own signs. Now, the county makes their own signs, which saves us a lot of money compared to what we used to have to pay for any type of sign, as well as we get it a lot quicker. And we will be looking into, if this is passed, to create some more signage to help too. So anything that we could do. And I heard what the first gentleman said about, I mean, hopefully we might have some money in a budget, can't promise it at all, because we never have enough money. Can't promise it at all, because we never have enough money every year to do the roads that we need to do. But we will look at that if this passes to try to enhance that road. Next person that wants to speak, yes?
My name is Katrina Fakas. I live at 141 Prism Drive, Greenville. And I am sworn in. I live, me and my husband, who was here at the last meeting, and my two little girls live directly across from the entrance. First question is, when, sorry, sorry, I don't know your name, we're going over the recommendations for this permit? The paper that was at the last meeting had 12 recommendations. This one only had 11. You only listed 11, so I'd like to know what was taken out of that. I don't know if that's something we can go over because there's one less than what was on there at the last meeting.
Do you know, Scott, if there was anything left?
I'll be honest, I don't.
We just read them in the book.
I don't have the other sheet. It may be in the file.
I have it.
I'd have to look at it.
I don't think we intentionally, I mean, I didn't even count, but I don't think anybody intentionally left something.
I understand.
And we may have consolidated two things into one. But unfortunately, we probably don't have that copy.
I have the copy that was signed by Scott Hayes. Or that was presented at the last meeting.
Do you have that, do you have those 12 on your phone?
Yes.
You didn't remember what he was reading? Could you tell there was anything missing?
Well, that's what I wanted to ask, if we could go over those once more. Because on the sheet, there's 12 and he listed 11. So I wanted to see if there was something taken out without our knowledge.
Do you wanna quickly?
We can if you'd like, yeah.
Yeah, quickly.
Yeah. If you have the sheet on your phone, I can just step up here and all. Because I am not trying to take anything out. But if something did get missed here, then certainly we'll wanna consider that. I mean, I typo'd on that.
Oh.
So there's still 12. I typo'd on my PowerPoint and wrote nine twice.
Okay.
Because when I copied it over, PowerPoint didn't auto-number it. And so I numbered it manually and...
I didn't get nine.
Gunst it up. So there is still 12. They're all still there.
Okay, all right.
I'm trying to figure out where I'd like to start here. I will say, we'll start with food trucks. The recommendation on here is that the food truck shall only operate during the times that they're open. And it cannot be noise that is audible from the property line. Food trucks use generators. That will be audible. There's no doubt because I can hear them talking when they're standing by their shop and I can make out the words they're saying. Sound carries extremely well out there. I can hear a full conversation when they're talking and they're 200 yards away at least. That food truck will not work on that property to where we will not be able to hear, to hear it. There's no way. That's one concern. The next one, I would like to know if there was a lease submitted when this permit was submitted. Because the land is not owned by Ditch Properties, LLC. The land is owned by the father. I can't think of his name. But the permit is submitted by Ditch Properties. So for another LLC to operate on someone else's land, there should be a lease that has been created. So I think it should be looked into that if there was a lease already made for another LLC to operate on the farm. If not, then this permit needs to be null and void. All right, I'm making sure I don't forget anything. The other thing I would like to say is that Christmas trees are agricultural for the person who grew them. They're growing trees right now and that is agricultural use. They will not be ready for four to five years. Going out and purchasing trees that somebody else grew, the farmer that grew those trees, that's agricultural use. But once they purchase them to sell, to resell, that's cost of goods sold. That is a business transaction, which is commercially used. That is not, once those trees are set and they will be listed on their taxes as cost of goods sold, at that point, it doesn't matter if it is candy, it doesn't matter if it's a chair. At that point, it is a cost of goods sold item. It is no longer an agricultural product. That is not agricultural use, which shows that nothing agricultural will be done on that property at least for five years. We're selling the trees that they grow on that land. The recommendations also discuss a parking lot, that a parking lot would need to be put in. And it has to abide by the ADA laws and regulations. I'm not seeing how, at this point in time, allowing cost of goods sold products, that aren't the trees, allowing cost of goods sold products in the gift shop. And allowing a parking lot to be put in to meet the recommendations. And having a food truck, how that is not a commercial environment. The... For lack of a better way to put it, it walks like a duck, it talks like a duck, it looks like a duck, it's a duck. It's as simple as that. They will not be able to agriculturally use their land for five years. There's no reason to allow this permit to go through because there is nothing agricultural being sold on that land. Those are probably my biggest things when it comes to the legality of this permit. The other things are what a lot of people have voiced, that is the safety. I live directly across from the entry. We have a sign within 100 feet of their entrance that says it is a dangerous intersection. We don't need more signs, we don't want more signs. There's no reason, it's already labeled a dangerous intersection. We have a school bus stop. And both of these are on my property. Both of these signs are on my property. One's on Hawthorne that says it's a dangerous intersection and one's on Prism that shows it's a bus stop. I understand two of these days are not on school days. I understand that. But the Friday is. And schools are open during those timeframes. It's not safe. They will, according to the paperwork, this will be ran until 4:00. Is that right?
Yes.
Schools get out before then, which means the business will be open while the kids are trying to come home. And that's not safe in the slightest. If for some reason this gets passed, that timeframe needs to be moved up to probably, I would say, 2:00 PM to allow the kids to get home safely. For that operation to close. If it gets passed. But like I said, I don't see how we can pass this permit when no actual agricultural use will be done for five years. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, I really appreciate your comments. Let's move to the next person. Thank you. Who else wants to speak? Come on up.
Justin Brown, Ben Swann, 963 Hawthorne Road. I'll talk to you a couple guys on this for a good amount of time. I appreciate that, guys, your time. As I mentioned to both two of you, my wife has reached out to Christian County, the Delval Tree Farm in Nixa, to see what kind of impact we will see. They were open the day of Black Friday, that weekend, the weekend after, the weekend after. They were open five days last year, sold out of trees for 300 trees. All road for 300 cars and five days will not work. They can't get in, can't get out, where are they gonna park? The gift shop don't need to be there to make people stay longer, adjust the road more. And food truck, no reason for people to stay around. Get in, get your tree, get out, it's gonna happen. You don't need people blocking the way if, well, I can't get home. Or any of these people, or my wife, or my son, my young son when he gets older. I've already getting nervous enough when they're out. He's out driving. We live out there for a reason, to get away from it all. Away from businesses, that's why I live out there. I want the country life, I want the quietness. And it sounds like it's going away. So it doesn't happen. We have reached out to Missouri Conservation because they have a rule that you cannot transport firewood. To ask them, once you cut down a Christmas tree, what is that classified as? They have yet to email us back on that. Food for thought for you guys. Because it is a dead tree once you cut it. So, and I said, firewood, they do not want to transplant it because of bugs and diseases. You guys know how it goes with the rest of it? I'll just look at that, so. This whole thing's got me very frustrated. Because I was still safe out there.
So, sir, did you, I didn't quite understand. So what did the conservation department, how did they classify?
They haven't, they haven't did emails back yet. We went up to, or she went to the Missouri Conservation. They handed her the brochure, there's an email on there, she mailed them, and we had to reply on that. That's been a week and a half. So I don't know how they classify that. To me, it'd be tossing the firewood, because once you cut a tree down, that's considered firewood. So I don't know for sure. So we don't have an answer to see how they would classify that.
According to our county attorney last night, in my hour-long conversation, that Christmas tree, cut someplace else to be sold as a Christmas tree is still an agricultural product. I understand it's not live. You can, I used to buy for my kids, a Christmas tree that was bald and burlapped, and that way I could plant it as a live tree. And we did that five or six years in a row. So we had several white pines in our first yard that was live. But so, but the ones that you cut to sell for a Christmas tree and you have to have a Christmas stand or something to hold it up, is still, I agree, it's not gonna be a live tree. But it's still an agricultural product, according to our attorney.
And this may just be my opinion, I'm against growing trees, just turn and cut down for a month or two. I mean, what's the point? We're supposed to be steward of the land, protect it, and we're gonna spend some months and just try and kill it. I don't go down and cut down trees to keep my house alive, I wait till they fall. So. Thank you, guys.
And I appreciate your phone calls and I also appreciate your testimony today. Okay, next person? Okay, come on up.
I'm gonna need a tissue. I'm Deanna Chestnut, I live at 969 Hawthorne. My first question is, I'm not sure how 21 people who don't live on Hawthorne wrote letters in support of this, because it's only four people who actually live on the road or even informed per the application, because you have to live within 1,000 feet of that property. I wasn't even informed and I'm two properties down. So I'm not sure how 21 of the people who don't live on Hawthorne sent in letters of support. The county representative for the road department has already testified and stated that Hawthorne is one of 700 miles of dangerous road in Christian County. So that is already on record and has been testified to. I don't know how signs is really gonna change that, because as other people have said, the layout of the road itself is extremely dangerous because of trees and other things. That being said, I for one, do not want that to change either, because I enjoy my country road. I live at the corner of Grandview and Hawthorne and for probably six months this year already, we didn't have a stop sign at that place. Because we have a lot of hooligans that would like to drive out there and whatever. So literally, they didn't even have stop signs. So I don't know how the county is gonna keep up with all of this going on with this. I would request that a decision on what the term vicinity is be made before any final vote is made. Because again, kinda like this whole conditional use permit, it is a sneaky way to get a business into a residential area, period, end of story. All of the people, the Ditches who have testified and spoke at the last board of adjustments meeting, every single one of them that spoke in favor of it all used the word "business." They all said it's a business. So they admitted that. We all live there because we don't want to live where businesses are. So I'm not quite sure why somebody who does not live there and has not paid taxes there, as most of us have for, I mean, I've been there 22 years, a lot of other people have been there longer than me. We've paid taxes to this county for years and I don't understand why our opinions don't matter in this. We are the ones that live on the road. We are the ones here. I'm glad that you got these supposed letters, but again, the people who live on the road keep showing up to these meetings in person because we are extremely concerned. And again, we can't get any answer on who's gonna oversee these stipulations. Actually, at the last meeting, at the very end of the meeting, the point that Ruth brought up about the trees being brought in, the very, very end of the meeting, they said, well, technically, you could sell the Christmas trees out of the gift shop and it wouldn't be agricultural, or it wouldn't be your, however that was. It was a sneaky way of being able to sell the trees out of the gift shop after you shipped them in, because it was stated you can't sell things that weren't grown on the property. So that was the other concern. Because yeah, realistically, we shouldn't have to deal with this for at least five, five, seven years if that's the way it's gonna be. So I would like for that to be determined before any final vote is made, that you need to determine what vicinity is. And I think anybody in their right mind would not believe that anything outside of the state of Missouri would be vicinity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Who's next? Okay, come on up, sir.
My name's Glenn Trust, 180 Prism Drive. And I have those sworn in. I just wanted to add on to a couple of things that Katrina and Deana and Ruth and everybody have said. This is the fourth meeting on the same issue. It went down five to one at the first meeting, ended up being remanded, so we're here again, as Deana pointed out. As Deana pointed out, we're all very concerned, and we're not in favor of what's going on. Spare me the talk about what my lawyer said. Because I can tell you right now, and I've dealt with lawyers, I've been in government with lawyers, and, uh, if I go into a lawyer and sit there with him for an hour with a position that I want to maintain, that lawyer will find a way, because that's what he's getting paid to do, to help me maintain that position. So put that aside for a second. The reality is, is that I can buy an agricultural product at Walmart. I can buy agricultural products all over the county in commercial zoning. And if you're gonna sell an agricultural product, and I don't get, basically what, what we're saying here is that, a cut-your-own-Christmas-tree farm, where people, it's not a farm, it's, it's 20 acres of inventory at a store, right across the street from Katrina and my house. That's what that, you're opening a store with 20 acres of inventory right across the street from our house. That's all this is. And any other way of explaining it, I'm sorry, is flawed. And, uh, and again, please spare me what your attorney said, because I guarantee you, I can find an attorney that will give you an opposite opinion. That's what they do. We are opposed. I say this, I won't go through, my wife and I have written three detailed letters. I don't know if you received them, I don't know if you read them, I don't know if you even care. But we've written several letters with detailing every reason that we are opposed to this. But I will tell you, and, and Miss Chestnut said it, Justin said it, we moved there for a reason. We would not have moved there if there was a commercial operation across the street from where we were planning to move. We moved there for a reason. Um, it's very clear that those who will be the most impacted, those who will be impacted by what's about to happen are in opposition. We are not in favor of it. Now, how you can justify taking all of the voices that are in opposition and, and overriding that, we're just, it's beyond us, it really is. And, uh, so, again, please, please don't give us the argument that it's an agricultural product. I'll be honest with you, frankly, that decision is flawed. The, uh, the decision to consider the tree farm a cut-your-own-tree farm, it was, if it was a tree farm where people come in and harvest the trees, sell them wholesale on trucks like you do hay farm, like you do hay, like you do cattle, like you do corn, then nobody would be in this room objecting today. Not one person here that I know of, anyway, would be objecting to it. We're objecting to the fact that you're opening a store across the street from where we live. You can call it whatever you want, you can pretty it up with the word farm, you can pretty it up with the word Christmas. Doesn't change the fact that it's a retail commercial operation across the street from the homes that we bought, purchased, and have lived in, and as Deana pointed out, paid taxes in, and plan to live there. Uh, because we enjoy that environment. So, sorry if I sound a little animated today. Again, this is the fourth meeting. I'm really getting tired of saying the same things over and over again, and it really seems that, that there is a determination to see this go forward, no matter what we say. And, and again, it's, all of the opposition is here. And, and it's not, and as Mike pointed out earlier, it's not because we don't like the people. I have nothing, I'm a, I'm an entrepreneur, I'm all in favor of free market capitalism and entrepreneurial shit. That's great. However, do what you want to do, just don't do it to me. And right now, one person or one group, one operation is planning to affect everybody in this room. And that's, that's where we're at. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Who, uh, who else is next? You got anybody else that wants to?
I don't know, I wanna get my neighbor's side of the, um, see what they had to say. Um, I guess my question is, where do I start? Um, I know we, we've talked about trees being brought in, it says that it can be brought in in the vicinity. I mean, is that Missouri? That is a question. To your comments about you contacting Missouri about it being firewood. We actually went to a Christmas tree farm meeting, it's for all of Missouri. Delaware Tree Farm, used to be in this group, they're actually going out of business in the next 35 years. We would love to step into that role to provide this with the community. So at that meeting, they did say that when you sell it, you sell it as a Christmas tree. If we were to bring in trees from Michigan or South Carolina or something like that, we actually have to get paperwork from the state, from Michigan, and then we also have to be able to provide that to Missouri Department of Conservation, so that we aren't bringing any type of bugs or infestation in. So that is something that, like, we take on as a business, because I don't want to sell you a tree and then you take it home and be like, there's these random bugs all over it, and then infest a tree. So we take that on as a business. Um, if we were to sell pre-cut trees, where else to go with this? I don't know. There, there's been so much, the road, everything, I think we've talked ourselves to death. The road is what it is, it's up to the county to fix it. We widened the road, I know that was your concern before, it said the road was not widened, and you cannot see our entrance. We helped widen that entrance at the last meeting, you said that you now can see this better, which is great. We still have not finished cleaning up our front entrance, that is planned to get done. Nobody wants to go outside in 90-degree heat and cut down wood in the middle of the summer and try to pull fence. So, my question is, do you, do you have any questions for me that I can answer for you? I know they've talked and heard their side, can I answer anything that they've brought to you?
Yeah, so, so, Scott, you've got Ms. Holly's name, you, you've got her on the list.
You've got my stuff, right, Scott?
Yes.
I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you say your name.
Sorry, I did not know.
I thought I knew who you were, so I just wanted to make sure.
If you don't mind, will you actually just say it out loud, so it's on the recording?
Sure, yeah, my name is Holly Ditch. Um, I am one of the owners of Track B on Hawthorne Road.
Yeah, in this meeting, uh, well, this meeting is live, right? On YouTube right now?
Yeah.
So I didn't tell you this, but all the meetings that we do in, in this courthouse, we try to put them live on YouTube, and then 24 hours a day, it's archived, you can go back and watch. So you can go back today, all the people who are here today can go back and see if they've missed something or, or something like that. And so we've done that, this commission voted for that, because we've had a hard time in the past years, years and years. This county's over 100 years old. A lot of lack of transparency, and we do believe in transparency. So you're, you're, you're seeing this meeting, not just commission meetings, like at 9 o'clock, but you're seeing this meeting also being recorded today by our own IT people, and it's a real nice production. Okay, so, so, are you all planning to buy Christmas trees from another state? Or what's your plan for, until your trees grow up?
So there is a couple wholesalers that are in Missouri, there's a couple that are in Illinois. Um, we've reached out to them to see if we could get a couple trees this year. Um, we are on their list for 100. Um, we're gonna start small. We want to, um, see if we can get anyone to us. We, I don't want to buy 600 trees and throw 600 trees away, right? Nobody wants to kill trees just to kill trees. So we like to start small, so, um, we're on a list this year for a hu, for a little over 100 trees. And maybe the next year we might say, okay, well, we had people coming in or calling and saying we didn't have it, so we're gonna do 200 trees the next year. But once we start cutting, I don't plan to bring in trees from somewhere else. We plan to cut what we have and sell what we have. Maybe, I, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Christmas trees, I know you said you get white pines, but the Fraser fir, the Fraser fir is your typical Hallmark Christmas tree, and big fluffy, um, tree. Those trees are pretty expensive, they don't grow in Missouri at all, I mean, you have to be up in Michigan to get those. So we might say, oh, let's, let's get 20 or 40 of those trees and bring those trees in. So that might be something that we say, just so that we can have those if you want them, but you don't have to go buy them from Home Depot or Walmart or whatever, you're buying them from a small business.
So you will be selling some trees this first few years that you're getting from some places?
Yes, we would like to.
And according to our attorney, and the reason why I'm saying according to our attorney, uh, Christian County and Green County uses the same attorney for our county business. And you want to have a county attorney to make sure that the, everything, that, that, all the laws and regulations that we have passed and used is approved by our attorney, county attorney. That's why I say, I was talking to the county attorney to get definitions and, and things of what we're trying to do. Uh, if he said, no, it's not an agricultural product, we wouldn't even be here today. And then you talk about four meetings, the reason why we're having four meetings, and maybe more, I don't know, is because this is an important issue, and we're listening to you. We're giving you the opportunity to come more than one time, I'm sorry we're inconvenienced you, but it's, it's a matter of the fact that this is not easy to make these decisions. Okay? I'd rather be any place in the world than to be here today, listening to you all, and I'm telling you the truth. Okay? And, and so, but this person also has a right, because it's her property, and, and she has a right to do what she's doing. And I just wanted to make sure with the county attorney last night, that we are abiding by all legal regulations in our ca, in our county.
We are your constituents.
And you are.
We voted for you guys.
Yeah, 88,000 people were.
And both of the county, we voted for your guys living in San Antonio.
And we are the attorney. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It took an hour-long conversation to figure that out.
Okay, any, hey, Scott, some of the other things that were said, do we have any other questions for, for Ms. Holly?
Well, I, I, I think while you're looking at that, I wanted to make one comment. You know, we're, we're bound by state statutes, right? So we, we make our decisions based off statutory requirements. So we have to have that attorney's opinion. We, we don't always have the ability to make our decisions based off emotions. Sometimes we do make our decisions based off emotions, and those decisions can be overturned because they're not statutorily accurate. So we do look at, seek advice from our attorney to make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing. Then I want to go back to your comment. You said the road is what the road is, and it's our, it's our job to fix it. If you're creating impact onto that road above and beyond what's actually normal every day, it's your job to fix it, not ours. We require, uh, transportation studies to be done on certain roadways with commercial applications. If that roadway is receiving or, or gonna be creating a high demand on that road, we don't fix it, you fix it. You widen it, you make turn lanes, you make those improvements. So I just wanted to correct that statement that you had made. Um, will you have enough of an impact to create a demand to have a turn lane put in? Maybe not. We don't know what you're gonna do. One of the fears that I have when I look at this project, and I've been pretty open and honest, I don't like conditional use permits, and I've never voted for one, because it, to me, it's spot zoning. This is a residential agricultural area, and to put a commercial business in it with a conditional use permit circumvents what the traditional planning and zoning is as an agricultural or residential use. Go back and say this, some people may not like what I say, but I always try to say what I mean and what I, and the truth. So I'm not gonna tell you one thing and then do something different. I, I, I don't like that. I think a free man shall be governed by laws and not the whims of men. Conditional use permits are the whims of men, because some people put together some conditions on you that aren't backed up by any, any law other than what's been created by a, a group of people that says, well, let's put this condition on you, and let's put this condition on you. And if you don't adhere to those conditions, they take it away from you. Uh, which could put you in a, in a, in an odd position if you make a huge monetary investment in your property, and all of a sudden, a new group of people get in, and they don't like what you're doing, and they take it away from you. Now you have the whims of men instead of a wall backing you up. So it's kind of, for me, it's not just that, but it's also a protection for anybody that enters into a conditional use permit. I don't like, I don't like spot zoning, I think zoning should be, uh, should flow appropriately from one use to another to another. And conditional use permits, in my opinion, create some of that spot zoning. And, uh, that's just where I, I stand. I, I've never voted in favor of a conditional use permit. But even, I, I question even allowing you to sell trees off the property, create its, its commercial application. Even if you don't have the gift shop and you're, you're, you're coming in. But that may very well be allowable by statute, that you can grow your trees and you can sow your trees. It still creates an impact, and then inconvenience to all the neighbors around, but that's, that's allowable by law, and I can, I can live with that. The, the conditional use permit, on the other hand, for the gift shop and everything else that happens, I'm not in favor of that because of what I stated earlier. So I think that's the thing that we have to navigate through this, is it allowable to grow trees and sell trees? Yes, it appears that it is. Is it allowable to import trees and sell them, even though they don't come from the property? I don't think so. That's my opinion. Um, the, the law says the vicinity, and I was looking at my, my smart device here, it's wonderful to have one of these things, they can tell you almost anything, but it can't tell me what vicinity means. Neighboring. Well, what's neighboring? The barn next to you or the state next to you? I don't know. And that's something we have to try to figure out and navigate.
So in regards to traffic, um, I also wanted to make that, if you have one driver, if all, if all three of you lived on that road, and you were to drive up and down that road, you guys would drive on that road more than the people that we have come to hopefully to that farm? So 365 days a year, if you guys drove up and down that road every single day, you're gonna drive on that road more than the people that I'm gonna have show up for the tree farm. And I understand your point that it's for a couple weekends a year, it's for a couple weekends a year. It's not all the time, and that's why I don't want to go commercial, Bradley. Because I don't want someone or me to all of a sudden die, and my kids to say, I don't want to sell this, I don't want a tree farm. And my kids to say, well, I'm gonna put a strip mall in there, because I'm pretty sure that my neighbors would be pissed. If my kids for some reason thought they could put a strip mall in, then I would be pissed. So I don't want to go commercial, and I regulate. Tell me when I can do it, what times I can do it. Go ahead, tell me, tell me I can't do a food truck because my neighbors are gonna be upset. That's fine, I'm okay. But essentially what you're doing is telling me, stay within these boundaries? And I'm okay with those boundaries? Because it makes my neighbors happy. We planned to live on that property at some point in time. Not right now, right? Not this minute, but our goal was to possibly live on that property someday. And so I don't want to sell property and turn it into a strip mall or a Walmart or...
Totally understand, and, and that would not be allowed by our, our traditional zoning code, right?
Right.
But, you know, one of the things that I think, if, if you have an entrepreneurial spirit, which I'm an entrepreneur, my entrepreneurial spirit is always to grow bigger, get bigger, do more. I'm making money off trees, now I want to do pumpkins. I'm making money off pumpkins, now I want to do strawberries. And now 20 acres turns into 60 acres, and you've already proven that a conditional use permit can be allowable, well now we'll just, we'll keep expanding. And the demand is now not three weekends a year, but maybe it's half a year. So that's, that's the things that go through my mind. You know, if we, if we set precedent with a conditional use permit for three weekends a year, and now we try to incorporate more and more things, now it's every weekend out of the year, there's traffic coming up the number of.
This is my husband's hobby. This, this, I do not plan to quit. I, I work at Children's Hospital in St. Louis, and I love working with babies, that's why we don't live down here, because I'm sitting there saying, I don't want to stop working at Children's. I think, I love my job. I don't want, I don't want to come live down here. Now, Children's is like part of Cox, so that might actually happen one day, but I, like, I don't want to solely be a Christmas tree farmer, and if I'm gonna solely be a Christmas tree farmer, we went to a great Christmas tree farm, P. Bridge Christmas Tree. They do B&amp;B, they sell, I mean, they bring in 1,000 trees, and they probably sell 8,000 trees. And none of them work, they all work at the farm. That's not the goal. The goal is to continue my nine-to-five and to do this in the right time.
That's all I have. Any other, any other comments or questions to, to this lady? Okay, then I think, uh, I think we're go ahead and ready to, uh, make a decision and actually vote. And, and, uh, so I will just start this out by saying, I would prefer, after talking to, I won't keep saying it, because I think it's the right thing for us to do, is talk to our county attorney to make sure we're within the law and regulations that we have for Christian County. That's why we talk to our county attorney. Wouldn't make decisions without our county attorney. I, I would like to either carve out the food truck and eliminate it because I think it is a commercial use and has nothing to do with the agricultural aspect of us already approving the sale of Christmas trees, the raising of Christmas trees, harvesting of Christmas trees. Christmas trees and selling Christmas trees. According to Mr. Faks, the food truck is a stretch, a real stretch, to be part of the process that we've already approved. So, we can either vote on it individually, because we have two questions. We have, we have the food truck and we have the gift shop. I'd rather take them either separate or eliminate the, so I need a motion to what you all want to do, but I either want to vote on the food truck by itself or we, or I would just eliminate it from voting on it. Whatever you want to do and then take up the gift shop.
I would, the only comment I would make to that is reading from Mr. Faks's letter. He does raise questions partly because there's uses that have particular names like accessory use, et cetera. There's more work, there are different wording there. But a highlighted thing right here says, "So, the Christmas tree stand is fine and the gift shop slash food shop is also fine. It's a conditional use so long as it is approved by the board." So, I don't, I don't want to discount that from the letter on that because that's in there as well. He does not call those accessory uses. That's a different terminology. But he also clearly says that he believes the Christmas tree stand is fine, the gift shop and food shop also fine as a conditional use so long as it's approved by the board. I'm not saying that because I want to go one way or the other. If we're going to quote him, we need to be sure that that's mentioned as well.
And he did. He sent all three of us a copy along with Ms. Kayla, our administrative assistant. But then when I talked to him about, I asked him more about the food truck. He said, "Well, it's a, it's a, it's a longer stretch to make it fit our, to make it fit our code, county code." And so, in listening to the people out there, I don't think they, think they need or want a food truck that could maybe create more traffic or whatever. But I, I'm okay with it. We can go ahead and, I'd like to vote on them individually. Is that okay with you all? I mean, I don't want to vote for them together.
The only thing I would say is if the, if the end vote here is not approve the conditional use permit, there's no sense in going through all of those restrictions, you know?
He seemed to indicate that we could approve the, approve or disprove the conditional use permit and separate the two.
Oh, we can.
Two items. That's what I'm asking.
Okay. Let me go ahead and say a word if I may. So, to the question addressed to how can we make a decision this way or how can we make a decision that way? Because it's obvious that the vast majority of the people in this room at least are in opposition to this. So, I have an answer for that. It may or may not be acceptable to you. It's called the Christian County Planning and Zoning Regulations. There's things in this. So, I could open it at random and I could show you something here about mining and oil drilling and quarries and whatever. And you might say, "No, no, 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 no." But I would say, this, this is the book that at least in my mind, I have to follow in making these decisions. So, for example, is our conditional uses permitted in this book? Answer without question, yes. Yes. Does that mean this one ought to be approved? That's not my point right now. My point is conditional use permits are in the book. So, I differ from you, Mr. Jackson, because to take a blanket approach that says, "I'm not going to do that," would be like taking any other thing in here. Here's an agricultural reserve district. Can you say, "I don't believe in the agricultural reserve districts and I'll never vote for it?" Well, you need, you need to think through that because one of these things might have to do with the Property Owners Association or it might have to do with the, with other, about anywhere turning here, there are regulations. Adult entertainment, you know, is regulated, et cetera. And so, and right as well. So, my point is for those of you saying, "How can you make a certain decision?" Here's why. Here's what I start with. Is what's being asked permissible? This book does not tell what is always prohibited. That's not what it does. It tells what is permissible. So, the question is, are conditional use permits permissible? Yes. No question. All right. Second question that I think that I would ask here is there, are there extenuating circumstances that would require that we do or do not do that? And I have driven that road. I'm familiar with it. I'm a lifelong resident, grew up Spokane area. So, I'm very much aware of that. But I'm also aware of this, for all of you with that burden about the road. My understanding is if this commission, whether this commission approves the conditional use permit or does not approve it, you still got the road and they can still raise Christmas trees and they can still sell Christmas trees and people can still come down the road. I wrote down here, I look at this question. Traffic with only Christmas trees for sale. That's right. And that's, you ponder that. What will the traffic be over those, those two months or so? What will that traffic be if all the person can do is drive down there and get a Christmas tree, whether they cut it or whether they don't? Then I think in my mind, what about traffic with Christmas trees in the gift shop? How's that traffic? And then I have to ask myself, is the traffic significantly different? Do you understand we're talking about a gift shop that I think probably is smaller than this room we're in? Five hundred square feet. You take a twenty by twenty-five room, some of us at least would have master bedrooms of that size or larger. So, we're talking a fair amount. So, I ask myself the question. I play with these numbers, okay? Let's say there's a Christmas tree farm there and let's say that each weekend there's a, just pull a number, thirty cars to come down because they want a Christmas tree. Then say, "Okay, what if you've got the gift shop? How many are coming? Are there going to be ten more cars?" Because, "Oh, we want to go to that gift shop." That's something I have to ponder on it. But what I really want to say is, while I do not discount anything anyone would say at view of people that live nearby, I don't at all. I am aware that there was a time in the past that the property you built your house on was a larger tract and it was subdivided and you've got a house on it. And the people that were there then may have said, "We don't like all these houses out here. When we bought this, there was eighty acres across the road from us and it was beautiful and the deer came out. And now we got people." And people are a problem. The point is, it depends on where we are in time on that, again, from my perspective. And so, I think, and I want to say again, you cannot stock a Christmas tree farm. I'm pretty sure on that one. That one's been decided by court cases. So, if you come out of this and there's no gift shop, you still have all these other issues that you may be raising, but you can't stop the Christmas tree farm any more than you could stop the people I grew up with from baling hay and selling it and sometimes trucking it off to faraway places and sometimes buying hay and bringing it in where people didn't have hay that year. So, I just want people to know, I'm not, I'm not here to say, "Okay, whose voices are the loudest or who showed up today?" I'm really here to look at, is it permissible by the Christian County zoning regulations adopted most recently, I think in 2010? Is that, Scott, is that all right?
Yeah, 2010 was the first adoption and there have been some revisions over the years.
So, my, that's, my question is, is it permissible by this? And then we do have to look at the hard question. Are there reasons why we would not remove this and we have that right? And can we mitigate those with?
That doesn't mean there's common sense in that book.
I'm sorry?
Common sense. Common sense of safety is what we're concerned with, not your book. Common sense, what to do. Common sense. It's black and white. I mean, for us, it's clear. Common sense. Use your common sense. This does not make sense. Period. Thank you.
You know, and I understand what you're saying, common sense. I understand that. I hope we, hope everybody uses common sense as much as possible. But the problem is, is when I talk to our county attorney, and I talk to him probably more than the other people, but all the elected officials use our county attorney. We have to, to protect the county and protect the citizens. And what he'll tell me is if you don't follow what's in our book, then someone's going to sue the county for not doing what it says in the book, okay? That's what Hozie was talking about, Commissioner Blue was talking about. That's my only concern. I try to make sure. So, what I've offered people, and I find this very interesting. I've had plenty of town hall meetings with over a hundred people at those town hall meetings. And I've done that since I became presiding commissioner. And I have said this over and over and over again and I've not had one person take me up. I believe, I believe, since I've been here since seventy-seven, my wife, a lot longer than that because she went through the school system and those are, so we have over a hundred years of experience in Christian County. And I believe there are problems with planning zoning. Not, these people are doing a great job. Our department's doing a great job. But if you wanted to really improve Christian County, I think you could take one zoning issue at a time, just one. And citizens can work with the commission and we can do work study sessions and we could then work with planning and zoning and we might be able to make something better or improve it or eliminate it or whatever. The majority of the people need to be involved. But you know what? I've never had one person, even though you may be mad at what you just heard about planning and zoning, I've never had one person come to me because I'm willing to spend the time to see if we can make something better in this county. Because I'm not always for everything I see and read in planning and zoning. But I've never had anybody come to me. So, my offer is again, to you all, if you see something that you don't like or understand in planning zoning, come to me and I'll work with planning zoning and we'll all work together and we'll see if we can make it better. That's the way it should be.
So, what are we going to do right now, Mr.?
I think, I think I'd like to call for, get a, get a motion to, to vote on the, the food truck first and then, and then the gift shop. I'd like to keep them separate. I think, I think they're different. The reason why I say that is the gift shop, when, when I talked to the county attorney again last night, I, he said, "The gift shop is going to be illegal because it's going to be considered just like that food stand or whatever that's out by all the highway. You're going to have to have someplace to receive money. Somebody's going to have to, you're not going to take a bank bag and walk around those acres and collect money." He said, "You're going to have to have a place to collect the money. It's a, it's the final place that somebody goes after they're buying the Christmas tree, the agricultural product and inside." And I think five hundred square feet is, is small enough that you keep it, it really pinned to those Christmas, those Christmas items, like a tree stand or, or tree skirt or things like that. I don't think, I don't think it's going to really be a very big commercial business type thing. So, I think it's still, it conforms to our zoning book that you just, so he says it's allowable. So, I don't want to, I don't want to keep them together. I want to separate them. So, I would entertain a motion to, to vote on the food truck first and then the, and then the gift shop.
What do you think of Mr. Jackson?
I mean, I would make a motion to deny the conditional use permit entirely. If that's not seconded, that's your guys' decision and then we could go from there.
We've got it, we've got a motion to deny the conditional permit entirely. Do I hear a second?
I will not second that motion, sir.
And I will not. Okay. So, now we're to the point of asking again, is there a motion to, to approve or disprove the gift shop? And I don't need gift shop first.
Food truck. I'll make a motion to deny the food truck from the permit. That's section number five.
Okay. I got a motion to deny the food truck. Do I hear a second?
I would certainly feel more comfortable if the letter that Mr. Faks's sent had said what he said about last night. It does not begin in that fashion. However, I will go ahead and second that motion, sir.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, it passes three to zero. So, the food truck has been eliminated, Scott, from the conditional permit. Okay. Now, the next thing is the gift shop. And I would take a motion to either approve or disprove the gift shop and we can have comments.
I'm not sure that we need to, this motion is for the gift shop. I think it's for the conditional use permit.
Right, conditional.
Which permits the gift shop. But I mean, if we vote to take the gift shop out, what are we doing conditional use permit for?
Well, we...
You're exactly correct. Everything, everything else in the conditional use permit centers around the gift shop. It specifically points out in the conditional use permit that the gift shop shall, the gift shop shall, the gift shop shall. But the conditional use permit really was for those two issues.
Right. So, I would make a motion, sir, that we approve the conditional use permit with the food truck being removed from that, from that condition.
The only other thing that you might be able to bring up a secondary motion on would be the dates and times, which were listed out in section four, November the first through January the first, Friday, Saturday, Sundays from nine AM to four PM. That would be the only other thing that would be applicable for modifying.
Yeah, I'm not going, my motion does not modify those.
Okay.
And that's only two months. And how many days is that? Did you know how many days, two months?
Nothing about the kids though. They're getting off that bus for Friday.
What about Black Friday?
Or the reason we have Friday was mostly so we can sell on Black Friday. The other Fridays are not, the other Fridays are not, most Christmas tree farmers do not have high sales on Fridays except for later in the evening, which we don't be open. But the goal is to sell Black Friday because most people can.
So, I made the motion. I presume, I assume you're not seconding that as to approve the conditional use permit. I'm not trying to footwork.
Oh, I'll second anything to put it up for a vote.
Okay.
So, I'll second that motion.
Okay. So, we got a, we got a motion and we've got a second. And so, you understand that everything else still stays the same. We're selling Christmas trees. We've got the, we've got all the requirements of the gift shop that you're going to be watching. And for the public, one of the things that, because of the limited number of inspectors that we have to go out in the whole county, we really appreciate and depend on citizens to let us know when they see something wrong. So, if something would go wrong, you're going to call us and then that's when they send, the inspector's not going to drive seven hundred, we have seven hundred miles between the furthest point in Chadwick to the furthest point in Millings. And so, there's, they're not going to be able to go out during the daytime and find things that are wrong. But they go out every time that a citizen complains, they go out and check it and find out whether they're in compliance or not in compliance. So...
Can you move that time up on Fridays?
We have a motion and a second on the floor. We need to vote on that. We can't go back and make a modification unless the gentleman that made the motion would like to amend.
People are going to try to hurry to get there before they close and that's right when the buses are running. And that's dangerous.
I have, I'm not going to modify the motion. We can pass it or not pass it. We have a call for a motion.
Yeah, I just, all right. So, are you real firm on, on your times during the daytime? Could they, could you alter Friday just a little bit to?
I mean, if that will get passed, sure. I, that's fine. I don't, I don't want, I understand. I don't, I don't want, I understand the impact, I don't, like, this is not meant to hurt kids.
No, I know that. And nobody wants, nobody wants that to happen. I don't want any accidents.
I don't either.
Okay, so...
But if you wanna up it to three, if the kids usually are off the bus at three, then up it to three on Fridays. That's fine. I'm, I'm fine doing nine to three on Fridays, and nine to four Saturday, Sundays.
Okay. Let's just vote that one down, and we'll do it again at three. Can you do that?
I cannot modify the motion for that.
Yeah, or...
I can do, I can do what's wise, and hopefully, though. I, I would say, again, I drove a school bus for some two years for the North Kansas City School District, running three routes in the morning and three in the evening, have driven on a part-time basis for Spokane, have driven on a part-time basis for Dixon when I was teaching high school. Man, I, I do not, I do not believe this puts children at risk, but that's from a bus driver's perspective, and not from a commissioner's. However, then I am willing to modify my motion to approve this conditional use permit with the addition that on, we're talking about just the one Friday?
The, the Fridays during that two-month period.
The Black Friday. So you're talking about all Fridays?
We would do all Fridays. We would do all Fridays, that's fine. All Fridays.
She's okay with that.
Nine to three, and then Saturday, Sunday, nine to four.
So if you will please indicate that I withdraw my initial motion, I make that motion again with the further addendum that they will close at three on, on Friday during those times.
So, yeah, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, we got a, appreciate that. I got, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Two to, two to one vote. Okay. And anything, any, any other business?
Yes, we've got another...
Not for Ditch Farm.
Yeah, yeah, I know, this case.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When will we find out about the local or near ruling on what's being considered for bringing in Christmas trees to the vicinity again?
Well, the planning zoning board already voted on it, we voted on it. I would just say this, being a state rep in the past, and, and watching the marijuana law pass in the state of Missouri as an amendment, I would say, and I really appreciate the government in Missouri making it a Missouri product. You can't, nothing so in Missouri can be brought in from Arkansas or anyplace else, okay? It's a Missouri product, so it has to be grown in Missouri, and inspected in Missouri, and, and produced the product in Missouri, the capsules, tablets, gummies, whatever, and then sold in Missouri. And I would encourage you all to make sure that, that you try, and, to, to buy those products in agricultural, I believe they're agri, the attorney said they're agricultural products, in Missouri. I, I would encourage you to do this.
She's already indicated that some of those, I think she said Douglasburg, would have come from early Michigan.
Well, I know that, but I don't say anything. Scott, that's already been passed, right?
I don't, I don't know that we have a definition of what vicinity is.
Yeah, 'cause it, that's what the attorney... Yeah, vicinity is really...
So Black Friday's not...
I think we would have to designate what vicinity is.
That would be appropriate.
Make sure these good folks know that they don't want to set the definition.
Okay, yeah, and, uh...
We can look into that.
We'll keep looking at, and find out what vicinity means.
And how will we know?
You can call the commission office, check with us.
At what point can you give me the time and the date that I need to follow, how long it will take you?
I think it's gonna take a little while. I don't know if there's a, yesterday, we talked about cases, case law. That's what attorneys use, case law. And there's several case laws that actually substantiate what we just now did, okay? However, I don't know if there's any case law that will, has done and defined vicinity, okay? So, so that's, may take some time. If there is no definition, then it is what we say it is. That's, that's what it's gonna be, okay?
And what is, again, that needs to be stipulated someplace?
Well, that's, see, that's a good thing, the, the public should work with the commission. And we changed, defined, fine-tuned that word, vicinity.
I think, I think it's fair to say, though, that this conditional use permit has been approved with the language that's in it, and simply meaning, if, if you find, or we find someone that says, no, vicinity means within 400 miles, or 30 miles, which I don't think will, it won't change the fact this conditional use has already been permitted, has already been approved, and it doesn't mean we'll go back and rescind that because of the definition of the word nearby, or whatever that word was. I think this one has been decided.
I just don't see what importance the wording has in the terms if it doesn't have a definition.
I understand, and that's the thing we see often with legal kinds of things, they wind up with things that nobody clearly defines. Let's go on to that other one. I really suppose we're somewhere...
Yeah, we're gonna start the other case. Appreciate y'all gonna have to stay with this other case if you don't want to. Okay, Scott, we're gonna start...
So just to, just to clear up that vicinity, it's not in the conditional use permit. It's in the statutory law.
Yeah, that's why we said we...
Regardless of what we're saying here with vicinity, that's gonna be your state legislature. Your state legislators are gonna have to dictate what vicinity means. Because we're, we're pulling from the state statute with regards to vicinity. Once they define it, then we can enforce it, but it's not, there's no vicinity in the conditional use permit.
So why would you not go to them, since you're the ones that would enforce it?
And we go to the state legislature with everything. I mean, we, we send them suggestions all the time about, help us by clearing up this definition, that definition, this definition. A state legislature may, a legislator may come into office with 20 bills he wants to file, and by the time he leaves eight years later, he might have passed two of them. It takes a long time to process things. I have no problem reaching out to the three state reps that are service this county, and I'll ask them to take that on as a project, define what vicinity is, and put it in the state statute.
It needs to be there.
Yeah, and the other thing is, is Christopher Jackson and I have, have, on a regular basis, gone to Jefferson City to work on legislation with, that protects and takes care of Christian County. So we don't just stay down here, we actually drive to Jefferson City and spend the day. And I've done it several times this year and last year. So, so that is something that we can work on.
Oh, anytime we can clear something up, it's a good thing.
Right.
One way or the other, at least there's not an unknown.
Yeah, but you're not good.
That's true.
All right. Thank you for, thank you for coming today. Okay. Case number 20240135.
Yes, sir. So the applicants on this case are Thomas and Janelle Turney, and she is a trooper and is here with us still.
So sorry.
Their current zoning is A1 agricultural. They're requesting a conditional use permit to have an accessory structure with dwelling space larger than 1,000 square. So the, the first page here will show you their tract and where they are. They're way down in basically the southwest corner of the county, off of Jonesville Road, off the end of Jonesville Road. So the nearby land uses are mostly agricultural, forested, and single-family homes. The next page will have your zonings. They're zoned A1, most of what's around them is A1. There is a couple ARs in the vicinity as well. So the applicant is requesting the conditional use permit under Article 4, Section 10 of our zoning regulations, to construct an accessory dwelling structure above the county's 1,000 square foot maximum for accessory structures. So our history on this one, it's a 53-acre parcel that sits just north of Stone County in Christian. There is a portion of Jonesville Road there that you can see on the west of those maps that the county does maintain, and we would count that as road frontage traditionally. The applicant came to our office and wanted to look at splitting off some land to build a second structure to have some family move into, and kinda give them their own piece of property. But the way our subdivision regulations are written, they don't have the road frontage to do that, and then this easement that comes off the end of Jonesville Road is being accessed by seven tracks at least that I can count. So that would put them over the maximum of three tracks that are allowed to access off the end of an easement. So I don't have authority administratively to approve subdivision. It would require constructing a road, that would require engineering, approval from the commission, and so on. And then there's also a neighbor that is to their north, where part of that road crosses that would involve participation from that party as well, and then eventually dedicating that roadway to the county. So in lieu of that amount of work and expense and effort on their part, we're requesting the CUP to let them build a secondary dwelling structure that would be more the size of a normal house for them to have family move into on their property, but not be able to split it at this time.
And how much property do they have, the people making this question?
They own the 53 acres that's highlighted there.
All right.
They own the whole, yeah, they own the whole, the whole beast there. So our future in the induced map does look at this favorably for agricultural and residential uses. As far as compatibility, it's all large tract, ag, or residential use type stuff. No specific provisions for landscaping or buffering. As I mentioned, the property's accessed by that easement, that really by our standards is overloaded. As far as building design, you know, we haven't had any applications yet at this time, that would come after the CUP approval, so there's no designs in particular that have been proposed. Utility is private, well-inseptic out there. A condition of the permit, and this is as written in our codebook, is that the, the accessory structure would have its own connection to well and septic, and not be served through the primaries, like, they wouldn't run a two-inch water line from their house to the accessory structure to serve it. It'd have to have its own connection to a well and septic system. Transportation impacts, I wouldn't expect any out there. And the applicant has stated that they're, they're living currently on the property, and the idea would be for them to move out into their own space, and so it really shouldn't increase the number of cars, or traffic, or people that are out there already. Groundwater impacts, nothing significant. No floodplain or sinkhole on the property, no significant stormwater impacts. So as far as staff comments go, again, we're looking at Article 4, Section 10, and the code reads, "The living area in an accessory structure shall be limited to 1,000 square feet," but then goes on to state that "A conditional use permit can be granted to increase the size of the living area within an accessory structure beyond that 1,000 square foot permitted size." It further calls out that the property owner must live in one of the two structures, and that the structure must have its own connection to a well and sewer. So at the P&amp;Z meeting, the applicant spoke to their intent to build a second house on the property in a, in the same or similar location where one had been existing and burned down several years ago. And there was no other public comment at that meeting. So at that July 15th meeting, the P&amp;Z commission considered the facts of the case and the public comment that was made, and forwarded a unanimous recommendation of approval for this request to the Board of Adjustment with the conditions as listed below. The first two are written, copy-paste out of our code that go along with it. Water and sewer shall be connected directly to the accessory structure rather than attached to the principal. Number two, the property owner must live on one of the two structures. Number three, the new structure shall be such that it could be subdivided onto its own parcel in the future, and meet the current requirements of the zoning district. So essentially, the idea behind that one is, an accessory structure could normally be a little closer to the primary structure than if we viewed it as two houses with a property line. So it's just to make sure that there's enough space in there that in the future, there would be an opportunity to cut that onto its own land if that was ever provided. And the location they're proposing is well far enough away to do that. And then number four would be that all of their county regulations adhere to that.
And if, on that one, if they did, at some future point, want us to put that on its own parcel, and so forth. They still have the problem with all these emptying out of the easement, right?
With the road, yeah, yeah. The road would have to be improved.
The road would have to be improved, or it would have to be something different from an easement?
So it would have to be either a private or public road, which would be required to be built to the county's standards. If it's private, then we have to have some kind of HOA, or covenants and restrictions that call out the maintenance. If it's public, then you guys would vote to take it into our road system, and the highway department would maintain it from there.
Okay. Yeah, okay. But the part of the road that they now enter that's on an easement, would it have to be improved too, or is it, would you go down a road with an easement, and then you hit this, county roads there, do you know?
No, the, the easement space that's there, if this CUP was approved, would be allowed to remain as-is.
It just feels to me like they might never actually do that, other than you just did that to kinda protect it.
It's possible. I'm just trying to think about the future.
Sure.
200 years from now, maybe, when that gets fixed, and someone comes in to subdivide the tracks, you know, they have the potential to do that.
I think it's a wise move.
Always good to look to the future, but, you know, when you're explaining this in your definitions, it appears to me like this, this route was decided on just to circumvent building out the road, and going to the expense of building out a road to, to specs, right?
I would, I would certainly agree, this is the, the easier route to accomplish what they're after on their property.
And so we're not, but we're not looking at building an accessory dwelling unit for a hardship case. This is not someone moving in, that we need to take care of an elder parent or something. This is just basically where...
Yeah, that might be a better question.
We do, we do have on occasion where, where people have a hardship issue, where they're trying to build, you know, an accessory dwelling unit, such as a, a shop with a ha, with living quarters in it, versus an entire dwelling unit, traditional house.
Right.
And so they wanna get an aging parent, grandparent close, so they can take care of the medical issues, and, and they, they go that route. But what you're doing is, you're, you're just building a house.
So the primary residence currently has my daughter, her husband, and kids, and my husband's mother-in-law, and then us, we're all living. And so the idea is, is that this structure will actually be for my husband and I to move into near the shop, where I have all my animals as well, over there. And this warehouse was already built, it burnt down, so this property has historically had two homes on it. The, it's already set up, it, the septic's already there, permitted septic, there's already separate piping for the well with, which has a larger carry, or, my husband can say this stuff better, storage. So it's already piped that way and set up.
How long has the house been going?
I think it burned in 2012, or 2014?
Okay.
Something like that.
So it has been a while.
Um, I can't say for sure, but, uh, so, I mean, in a way, you know, this is so we can, I mean, we're obviously keeping the family all together on the property. We had hoped to be able to eventually parcel off and be able to sell the primary residence to our kids, but we can't do that yet. There, I have talked to the lady who's in charge of roads, and there is a, possibly a way for us to get that done, where, because the primary residence is accessed actually off the pavement road that the county is maintaining, but they don't technically own. So we can have that, I guess, give to this county, but that would be, that portion is not owned by us that we are aware of yet, so...
So, so the home, the home predates planning and zoning? So it would have been grandfathered in at that point in time, that there were two homes on a parcel? The parcel burns down, unfortunately, you didn't rebuild immediately.
We didn't own it.
But now they would be, excuse me?
We didn't own it at the time.
Oh, okay, okay, so you, you purchased the property after the fact?
Yeah.
Changes my opinion a little bit, so, sorry. You heard me say what I said earlier about the conditional use permit?
Yes, I understand.
You're probably already given... You're probably already giving me the stink eye on that, but not all of them are necessarily built the same. And I, I kind of understand what you, what you're talking about, the family and, and the additional dwelling unit. And I totally understand the fact of, of private roads and, and building out. We, we run into this time after time after time where, you know, we, we've got this private drive with an easement that so many people are connecting to, and then all of a sudden, somebody decides to sell. We don't know who the ownership belongs to. They're having an issue with selling. And we, we've tried to, I think the county has tried to rectify that by requiring, you have so many connections on this, now it needs to be built out and registered in one way, shape, or form, whether it be a county road or a private road with covenants and restrictions and homeowners associations. So the maintenance is to alleviate the future issues. And so I, I just kind of feel like this is trying to circumvent going down that route, but then I can, I can respect and understand what you're doing.
Currently, it's, we're not proposing to build a drive. I mean, it's already has an access that's been used for as long as the property's been there. And then we're not adding, we're not adding an additional access.
Access point.
To it. It's, and actually, it's already, the drive is already on that piece where we're going to be building is already paved as well because that was just part of it, still there next to the shop.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other comment or questions?
No.
Okay.
The motion, we approve this, uh,
Okay.
based upon the unanimous recommendation of our planning and zoning.
Okay, we got a motion. Appreciate that. Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. It passes two to one. Thank you very much.
So is there anything else I would need to do? Or we are, we can actually start making plans to?
Yes, well, I'll put a letter together and send it to you that will call out the conditions and kind of lay out what happened and say that you have the approval. And then at that point, basically, just submit that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry.
I was, I was.
I was supposed to be somewhere five, seven minutes ago in Springfield.
Oh, no. Hey, drive safe.